Anything I'd like to call that January 22nd, 2020 is school committee business meetings for order. Chat name is FY 2022. First item on the agenda is the political weakness. Is there anything to write about the agenda of January 22nd, 2020? Is there any comments concerned or issues with the agenda as presented? One second please. Alright, so I got a motion by George to second by Nicole to write about the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any animus? Next item on the agenda is public comment. No public comment? To the exciting portion of the night's festivities, which will be the build on the Mashpee Public Schools fiscal year 21 budget. And I turn it over to the superintendent and Mr. Paul Pong for the discussion.
The addition I would say from the last meeting that we had was that the budget probably reflects the minimum of $126,000 of computer capital items that previously had been included in our, um, my item for technology. Curriculum instruction and technology. So what you have in front of you is a million of those reduced by 126,000. And then the other change that is reflected in this budget is over on the salary side, we reduced by $50,000. And that does reflect a, um, information about a teacher of the school who is going to be teaching in Columbia next year and will not be returning. And we do not anticipate filling her spot.
A country one?
A country, yes.
That's what I asked. I was like, oh, Nicole, yeah. You went right to the international tip. And I know I wanted to, um, took it over to the working group as well if they had anything to add, but I know Nicole had a question about the narrative for the project on page seven.
Uh, yeah, so my question, um, Paul was in place you, I just didn't get to this before the meeting, but, um, the total grants under revenue sources, does that reflect competitive grants that we have brought in? Okay, that's just a decline in several.
Okay, okay, I agree. Because you can't count on those competitive grants.
I agree. I, I think, um, the point I was making in the chat is that this is a level service budget and we've been able to add services through those competitive grants and some of the awards that we've gotten, um, because of how awesome they are. So I think, I don't know how we can somehow put that in the narrative, incorporate that somehow that, um, because I think, you know, we're here tonight to celebrate Amanda, um, you know, our, our teacher of the year. Um, you know, our proposed programing is something that is, um, Mashpee has become very well known for. Uh, and we're doing this in a level service environment. And I just, I want, I think that makes it all the more impressive, but I don't think that that's really, I don't know that the public is aware, um, that we're not dipping into town money to do those kinds of things, so.
These grants are pretty heavy, pretty heavy, two million, a quarter of a million dollars.
This is, I mean, the narratives are perfect, but we always talked about the narrative being a two-year-old horn kind of thing for everyone, right? So we just, we have to find a spot where we can put that, maybe like an historical, same thing we do a couple of years back. I know we can't really assume any competitive grants in the future, but at least we can talk about all the ones we've brought in the past. And I'm guilty of our lifelines, because we have the innovative, the, um, the pack list.
The schools capital, which is the big one.
Yeah. There's some more coming out of there if I have a little further cover.
Well, we already have one, I mean, we did a half way going around $47,000, we've added a $10,000. People were looking, implementing half ways for that last year for $10,000, so I mean.
Yeah, great stuff. That's, this is, you're a hundred percent right, we need to push that stuff out as much as we can to the level considerable.
Yeah, particularly if we're going to be spending that money in the budget year that's being presented to the town so that we can sort of in the near say, in, you know, in addition to this level service, we're also able to do business in this.
Awesome.
I guess, one of the things that I, I like the, um, what you do, what you're doing is, is the teacher mini grant program and also the student mini grant program. I personally would like to see that continue on. And I guess I would suggest that we do make a commitment to continue that on for FY 21. And if we need to adjust the, um, school choice funds that are allocated to support the budget, that we do that with the expectation that we'll manage, hopefully back to our number over the course of the year. But if we don't, I still think it's, um, of work on investment and the work with, um, students and work with, um, teachers. That would change, that'd be about $30,000 of additional funding that would come out of school choice. Overall budget would go up 30,000, our school choice, um, contribution would go up 30,000. Appropriation would not change. I would look down the road potentially to change that, but not at this point. I'm just understanding that we currently have support from the town in the way to the budget number. So I'm sensitive about that changing the budget number, but I'm really adamant that I think we should make that commitment to the students and to the teachers.
Are you okay with doing that as we did this year at the end of this fiscal year, that we take the remaining monies we have and reallocate as necessary with a priority given to the grants?
I would, yeah, maybe we might want to cover the funding level, but I would like to see the commitment upfront so that we may bring it into the fiscal year. But that will be there and also give the students and, um, the teachers an opportunity to roll up front. And that will be available again next year. So.
I just, my only concern is that we, we're really, if we're not changing the appropriated money that we're asking for, I just want to make sure that we're, we post this on the agenda the correct way for a vote.
So we've got the budget for a vote, and this is part of the budget. So what I'm, we'd be making motion for is to change the budget for FY 21 by $30,000 with the funding to come from school choice funds that will be available in FY 21.
So you have to add a line item into the budget for $30,000 into a, into a specific line item in the budget, correct? And then increase the projected school choice fund usage by $30,000, is what you recommend?
Well, it's going to be a total line item in the budget. I don't know where the expenditures will come from. We're going to be a section curriculum instruction in technology, technology, paradigm centered, we could put a hundred thousand for, um, uh, even our world, or it is a small. So we, so we, 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 we could put it in there and increase, um, the, uh, choice money, we have to offset by that.
So we can continue the discussion, would you like to make a motion then, Don, for the, for the children?
Uh, yes. So I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that for the FY 21 budget, that we increase the curriculum and technology for two specific items. One, the teacher mini grants, a bunch of $25,000 dollars. The second, the student mini grant program, $5,000 dollars. But we also change the. Change the dollar amount coming from school choice from 538,865 to 568,865. An increase of $40,000 for those two projected program.
And depending on how that would, I'm sorry, do I have a second? Second, but seriously, a motion from Don on the table is to add, um, $30,000 to the curriculum and technology, is it curriculum instruction? I'm sorry.
Not, not section.
Curriculum instruction section of the FY 21 budget, $25,000 off for teacher mini grant program, $5,000 for the student mini grant program. And to also change the projected, uh, school choice allocation to our FY 21 budget from 538,865 to 568,865. I got a motion by Don and a second by George. And I'll go ahead for a discussion.
So I don't see anything in the packet that references agenda item seven. But do you know something I don't? Okay, I haven't seen anything about whether we awarded all those 25K or the 5K to the students or whether that's a good amount we have?
Yeah, that's going to be.
Yeah, we better check. Okay, so how many did we turn away of teachers? Granted, well, what we did with, which I could talk about, but anyway, when all the teachers who applied came to, the request came to, I'm not trying to pick up a different agenda, I'm just saying, it was, we're incorporating those items. So the teachers' total grants came to $35,008. And what we did was some of them were small and we moved those into this year's operating budget out of their, like, if it's in the NHS department area, we've got out of there. So you'll see on the chart which things got moved out. One, one request was for two, uh, military chairs that allowed disabled students to go on field trips, sewed and stuff. And we overfunded one, they asked for two, so things like that. So we've been able to bring it down to 25 or 33, but everybody got what they asked for. You see? And we had a couple of things down, but. Twenty-six. Twenty-six requests, some of them were about teams of teachers.
And then where do the students?
The students. We have received, um, fifteen. Two have been funded, four have requested additional information on. One is more recent, and it's a reusable water bottle for every student with a $2,000 request, it's quite hefty. And then we have eight additional that are coming out of the sixth grade genius hour. Altogether, the eight of those total $619,000. And we're looking at those, some of them fit sort of with expectations and goals and some of them are a little.
But you're well within the $5,000 that was allocated for that.
Well, yes, I mean, we were funding all of this, we're over the five, but we watch, yeah.
They haven't, they entered everything yet.
No. That's the only way it's going to sort of, stays in existence till we spend the money. So that one rolls until we run out and then the teacher ones close because we've expended that.
Well, the teacher one had a November 15th deadline to submit. And that's sort of been submitted by then, and then we got the three, three day process.
I would like that to be considered as a standard operating area in the FY 22 budget preparation. But for 21, 17, like, hundred limitations, it's not going to be an operating component.
Have you, um, looked at how this impacts the floor that we kind of set on school choice?
I have not. It's getting different before, I mean, we can only, in coming from, we can only assume that we're, our numbers are correct, but we picked this 538,865 with the floor in line, correct?
The, um, there are more students this year coming in the choice, so we'll pick that, probably that amount, right? That's another six students.
Yep.
And so, and we pointed that out for last week.
That was sixteen.
Yeah, but I mean, all I need is six.
Oh, yeah.
The other point that I was making when I was pointing around school choice funds regardless of whether it's current year or prior year. So probably there will be funds available to be able to do it.
Well, definitely makes sense because that's what school choice funds should be used for. But I just want to make sure that we did set a floor that we understand that could potentially affect the floor that we decided on. That's all.
Yeah. It won't because of the fact that you can look into FY 21.
Yep.
Um, school choice reimbursement. If you need it to, it means any of that.
George, you second again, I'm just asking.
Well, I don't like that this number is going to move. And I was just saying to Paul that I'd like that this, this number of projected school choice funds is static on this chart, that it shows some plan. So that's my only issue with it. I'm not sure if we have to do, I mean, I agree with you that I like the idea of the grant program being predictable. And I'd love to do it again, and it does, not doing that doesn't preclude us from.
No.
No, it doesn't. This just shows that we were planning in advance, how this is going to act.
The other concern I have is that we have yet to really define a process for, um, how we came up with those. Um, you know, so we, we did allocate this 207,000 this year to choice funds and we piloted a few things. Uh, I would love to hear from, you know, the administration and staff that, that this is a, obviously there's enough people applying, but would we expect to see that same level annually? I mean, maybe not.
I think that's a question of direction, the superintendent.
Some of the requests, I have to say, in terms of when we start our budget process and we do gather information from teachers, but I don't know why some teachers are not putting that in to make the operating budget. It's, you're talking, many of them are 500 or less. And we need to know that, and then we just make sure it is incorporated into the, into FY 21. So that, I think that process needs to be improved. Well, I always sort of picture the mini grant sort of above the beyonds or special events they might want to do or, or outside the box thinking versus, and these are, these are great ideas, but a lot of them, like I said, could be within the request in the operating budget.
My only concern, I apologize, my only concern is that, um, that at some point we're going to have to prioritize things. And if we start throwing stuff into the budget like this that could potentially be priority number five opposed to priority number one, two, and three for school choice spending, that we're kind of pushing ourselves into the corner. I mean, the list of stuff we did for school choice this year was presented by the administration discussion with the financial working group that was presented to the committee and the committee discussed priorities and how we were going to do it. I mean, it was a pretty lengthy, lengthy discussion, we talked about priority a lot. And if we continue with that process, including these grants, it makes, we just know that they're going to be on the list and then we discuss them and we make sure we don't have anything huge outstanding like some kind of, you know, a good example would be maybe the question that eventually be able to get approved to be ADA compliant and secure. And we were thinking that'd be number one priority to pay out of school choice and unfortunately that's going to offset half of the teacher grants or something like that. I just think this, we, we're kind of going back the way we did before, we're kind of losing our flexibility to spend this money how we want to or how we need to if we have to. But right now we're lucky, we've got sixteen extra kids, you know, it may not be like that in 21. So that's my only comment, but I defer to the Democratic.
It's going to be 32, but. But I, I, I would, for the purpose, you know, within the constraints of the discussion, I, I would prefer to wait and see what, how we decide to do this process in terms of that little pot of school choice money. And if the teachers and the staff recommend that we continue that grant program. But I just, I don't really know how to evaluate its success without input from the administration. So if they tell me that they want to do it again next year, I'll, I'll fight to put it in, but I, I'm not going to vote for your amendment now. Sorry.
You're asking for input from the superintendent.
Yeah, but I would prefer to plan as if we're going to be able to offer that program to our teachers and students, but go through school choice for FY 21.
Which is, follow up your class.
Right, but not, not.
No, the classes will be hit this year for school choice.
Right, just knowing that if we, if there's a need and everyone wants to still do it, we would go just directly to school choice. We don't follow through.
Which wouldn't necessarily guarantee that it would happen.
Well, we don't know that they, yeah, I just, I think we don't have like enough information to know whether. Correct, but this is the pilot year and then next year is two, but then we'll have, you know, and we really have to survey teachers to say, hey, this is really something. Who, who missed out on this? Would you like to still put in, would you have lights yet off too to still put in something? I think if we decide prior to the end of this school year that we're going to do that, then they can start sort of get their ideas flowing and letting it work. I think you're going to get what you want, but it's not, but maybe, I just don't agree this is the way to do it.
Well, I mean, this is at the point at which transfer from being the superintendent's budget to becoming the school committee's budget. So if it doesn't happen now, it doesn't happen. What we're talking about is, well, maybe next year, um, we look at, we look at that. If we're in a similar situation where we were this year and we have excess funds, we can potentially connect to this once we look at every other priority that we need to fund. And it may be at the top of the list to make that.
Yeah, uncomfortable with that.
Uh, to me, I think this is a win-win for the students, it's a win-win for the teachers, and a win-win for the district. And it's us being proactive to, um, support them.
I think it's a suggestion, Don.
Sure.
So one thing I've never been happy about over the last couple of years is how the, Nicole touched on a little bit, is how we keep increasing the amount of school choice that we're offsetting the budget with. Um, Paul might remember a little bit of this, but, um, we finally got to a point where we all kind of talked about enough and said, okay, this is, this is it. Right, we're not going to keep doing this, we're going to stop, we offset it by over, you know, uh, 500,000 now and we're good. So for an optics sense as well, it, it looks like we've increased it more, right? And we are, but for a good reason. But still, it's another increase after we said we're not going to do it anymore. I think maybe the better option that might be at medium here is, there's nothing stopping us from still earmarking that money, but not in the budget. So it's not on the agenda this, this month, but maybe next month we can have a specific agenda item voting on it to say this year we're going to allocate it. And that would just lock this in for this year and then it would not increase the budget, you know, the numbers in the budget. The school choice money wouldn't affect anything. And not only that, but because it's not in the budget, you could always focus to retract, you know, to take that money and use it somewhere if we need to. But once we vote to have it in the budget, that's, that's it. We can't take that money and use it for something else.
No, that's, that's true, but once it's in the budget, then potentially it could be subject to being included in the preparations for FY 20, uh, beyond. 22. Right, as a standard level service budget that we would probably be providing.
I don't see that happening, but not, not in that, not in the sense that I could, we'd not continually impact school choice year after year. Like what, like the worst concern was that it would lock that money in and we would not be able to use that for an emergency type thing or anything else we want. Because I don't see that becoming part of the standard operating budget that is not going to be my school choice offset.
Well, right now you can't identify particular items that this, that school choice is offset.
True.
Right? It's a part for, it's a part in order to balance the budget. And what it's a level at which we need to be acceptable to the town.
Which is what I don't like because then next year they can, Don might look at it and say, well, you increased it by $30,000.
Well, I will increase that.
So now, they don't really know or whatever, that we did these programs and that's why it increased. And they might just look at it like that we increased it and now when we look for a new budget, that's going to be taken into consideration. But if it isn't, many grants may not be.
So the other part of it is, we actually decreased the budget, the preparation request, without impacting any additional change to the school choice contribution. Right? So our appropriation request from the town is going down by the hundred plus thousand.
Probably early only went down by 50 because the 126 is coming out of another revenue stream from the town.
Yeah, the other question.
Yeah, I get that, but it's still town money that's paying for the 126,000.
Right. It's all, all to the town, but.
No, the only real decrease of, of money that's going to the school appropriated is $50,000 because we're not funding that position.
Right, so I feel we could use some of that to fund this.
Well, no, because that was a direct request from the town to decrease the budget by $50,000, which we were able to do. Anyway, Don made the motion, so he's got the last, he's got the last word.
Uh, I, I personally think that shows that the committee is committed to continuing to, uh, work with and projects for our teachers and our students. And then it's up to us to manage the finances in order to make it work going forward. And we've been fortunate historically that our budget has worked out. I hope it will work out again where there will be, um, excess funds that would be available to replenish, uh, school choice. And it already sounds, Paul was saying that, you know, our current estimate is already sufficient to cover this additional $30,000. So it's really no impact on the school choice funds.
Okay, just to clarify then, so the motion on the table is to increase the curriculum and instruction line item $25,000 for teacher mini grants, $5,000 for student mini grants, and increase the, the school choice allotment in the requested budget by $30,000 to match that. A vote of yes would, would change the budget. As said, a vote of no would, um, keep the budget as presented, but it would not, that no would not affect any future discussion about teacher or student mini grants in the future. Just to clarify that. This is not, has nothing to do with the mini grant program, just has to do with paying for them in advance. All right. Don, any vote?
Yes.
No.
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 The motion fails? All right. Any more, um, questions or comments or concerns or amendments to the proposed superintendent's budget? All right, any more questions or comments or concerns or amendments to the proposed superintendent's budget? Appreciate a motion if you have one, and then we'll discuss it and then move forward.
So when we move to pass the budget, do we have to use the correct amount?
I don't understand that question, I'm sorry.
Well, the twenty-two, seven, seven, eight, three, one, four is actually, needs to be reduced by one hundred and seventy-six thousand, or not?
No, it's.
It's not even.
Oh, okay.
And voting on the bottom one.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you're looking at this, she had chart two that has. Okay, sorry.
And we can verify that the request that we would be voting on if we get a motion is twenty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars.
That's correct.
So there's no wonder, if there's no other motions for amendment, then I would request a motion to approve the budget as presented at twenty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. And a motion by George and a second by Chris to accept the presented budget and approve it at twenty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fourteen. Any discussion? All right, Don, any vote?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So if, for yes, when no motion passes, the school, the superintendent's budget is now the school committee's budget for twenty-two million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Thank you, very efficient discussion.
No, we'll have to shut that off. I have some dates that I can't make them up in my head.
Can you shoot that out to everybody when you get that date, please?
I have a hard time.
No, when you get the date.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the MMHS school shareout. Principal Val Strachey, always here as my friend.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Really exciting opportunity to share out with you this evening with our Mashpee robotics. They get to have an experience of public service and budget, so we get to have extra tax honorings made today, which is great, so you can see how it goes on, and that's how we fund these things. So this committee is very supportive of this, and I want them to be able to know that, as you see how they vote and discuss this evening. The Mashpee robotics team is made up of students in grades seven and eleven currently, and has four mini teams within it with their own robots that compete at tournaments. We have an all-girls team, we have a seventh and eighth grade boys team, a freshman team, and a junior team. We're currently in year four, and the team has met with tremendous success, including winning two tournaments this year, competing at a national competition at Worcester Polytechnic Institute, and also qualified for the Southern Newland Regional Championships just a month or so away in Worcester, Massachusetts. We are very fortunate, not only to have a tremendous teacher and leader, with Miss Amanda Hall who's here with us this evening, but also very fortunate for the parental and community outreach and support for our students in the program as well. Here I introduce our students and their parents that are accompanying them. We have Nathan Shawn Ware, who were accompanied this evening by Mom and Dad, John and Mom. We have with us Sam Johnson, who's accompanied by his dad Craig. And we have Jamie Hughes, who's accompanied by Mom Julie Hughes. You'll see that in before school, after school, you know, when I get in nice and early, I see these kids all the time working in there, I see our families, our parents, Amanda. Always there, I go above and beyond, and just so proud of how this program has grown, starting to flourish. When we started with two or three kids and them working with Amanda, how I'm gonna figure out these robot things, and then all of a sudden it's this thriving, thriving program that's only gonna continue to grow. So this evening, also I want to recognize one other volunteer who's not in attendance, Mr. Casey Densmore, who is a mentor from Woods Hole in MIT, and he helps to focus on the programming of the robots with the students. So they've been competing, we were scheduled to present in January, but they had taken the robots all apart and are prepping for the next competition. So I'm gonna introduce Amanda, and then also have our students come up and show you what their robots are and give you a little summary of some of the things that they can do.
Good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. Along with you is Mr. John Ware, who you're gonna hear from at the end of our presentation, and Pete Shawan, Nathan's dad, and he's an integral part of our team. The amount of time and effort that he puts in with our team is unbelievable. I can't even give you the amount of time that he's always working with the kids and helping to troubleshoot. Laura is great with support, and so is Julie and the parents. I am always amazed that when I attend a competition on a Saturday or Sunday, and I look out and I see all the Mashpee club and all the parents that have come to watch their kids, and they tell you they're sitting here for eight hours watching eighty qualifying matches and running stand-ups and supporting these kids. And Craig has joined us this year with Sam, and we even had the kids at Quashnet competing this past Sunday. So eight teams were represented at Hopkinton High School, four Quashnet robotics teams, and four Mashpee club high schools. I think it was pretty cool to have the two generations competing. We started with four boys forty years ago, we're now up to about twenty-two students and four teams later. And we have girls in middle school represented. I really wanna turn it over to the kids, because it's the kids. They come in Tuesday through Friday mornings at seven-thirty in the morning, they work till eight-fifteen, they work till six, seven, eight, nine o'clock on Tuesday nights, Friday nights before competition. It's really all about them. So they wanna turn their robots on, they wanna actually show you what their robots can do. And I'll let them start doing that, you can ask them questions in a few minutes. I wanna let you know that there's no instructions for these builds. These kids are given a challenge every year in April, a game that's gonna be played, and they have a minute forty-five of live driving that they have to complete a certain task. And they have fifteen seconds of autonomous programming, so they write a program ahead of time that the robot will perform a certain task. There's no written instructions on the program, there's no written instructions on the builds. They have to design and problem solve and come up with it, and no build is ever done. Never done. You know, they can be, they can win a tournament like they did this past Sunday, and they will rebuild and reprogram and change it, because they see something that needs to be fixed or could be done better. Or they check out a robot that does something that theirs doesn't and realize they want theirs to do it as well. So they do have that pretty violent, guys, put your safety glasses on.
Yeah, Sean is open, so this is probably starting, you have to start within.
Microphone.
So you have to start within some size constraints. This is just my block folded up, and I can actually show you that. It's blow, it's a pretty. So I'm Nathan Ware, as they introduce me, I started, I started working, I started competing three years ago as a freshman with three other seniors, and they've gone now. But they helped to teach me how to build, how to do robotics in general, and like what it's like to compete. My first tournament that I ever competed in, we actually won, which was an exhilarating experience. And that helps to fuel like the fire that kind of is what drives me to do robotics now. I'd say I've spent over a hundred hours on this robot, probably closer to two hundred hours, just because of how intricate and difficult it is to tune these robots. So like building the actual robot was one step in the journey, and then tuning it was a whole nother animal, and probably, we've probably spent a month tuning it. So I would say there's something to say about the determination and the like no quit attitude that it takes to build and compete on a vexed robotics team. And that's what keeps me doing it.
You gonna try and grab right now?
Yeah, so, so, all right, we can all, we all want to grab for a minute or two?
Yeah, you can, absolutely.
See how they're all a little loud?
I've been writing all that, you know, when the kids are playing the game, this is psychology over this year. They're looking to stack as many cubes as they can in a minute twenty-five. They're looking to stack like nine to eleven cubes at one time in a specific zone. They're competing with another robot that's partnered with them against another team of two robots. So there's four robots in the ring, and everybody's trying to get the points in two minutes so that they can get the highest ranking for the elimination or final round that happens at the end of a tournament.
This is gonna stack, but it showed that the surface is a little different, so there's a chance of topless over, but.
Sean or Jeanne, do you want to add anything? Jeanne, on our girls team, if you're sure you know what that, you have a little wrestle today, so she's on here. Go ahead, Jeanne.
Um, so my robot is kind of there, so there's a lot of others wanting to add. Uh, which would be very helpful in competition, because there are towers throughout the arena thing uh, that we can dump cubes into multiple points, and in the competition, that can really make a difference.
So every competition has different components to it, so that different types of robots can complete different tasks and be more successful, so they go with a double or a square bar. They also, they share parts and they help each other, so like Nathan spent some time building this, and things weren't functioning the way that he wanted, so he shared some stuff with the girls. They're really good, both stepping up and filling in for each other and helping each other out. Sean or Sam, do you want to share?
So I just wanna talk about the determination that Nathan was talking about a little bit earlier. So like, the game comes out in April, and so during the summer, I think all three of these robots started being built over the summer. So we just worked pretty darn hard over the summer, and then come back to school, just get working still. And I don't think any of these robots are in the original state, pretty much no part of it is, because you just have to rebuild it again and again to get it right, because it's very finicky. So it takes a lot of determination and just cooperation of the team and, I don't know, yeah.
Isn't what, um, he's right, they started in the summer. We ramped up, as Mr. Bill Strachey and I were talking the other day, and I said, oh, what do you think the future of robotics is, right? And where do we go from here? Every year we kind of took a couple of steps, as Nathan said, every year we got a little bit bigger. This year we kind of jumped in right into the deep end of the pool, and we started competing. We competed the first, for second week in September at Cape Cod Community College with the Lieutenant Governor. And it just ramped up from there. They've already attended multiple tournaments, and they won the QCC Winter Classic in Worcester on December twenty-first. They won the competition at Hopkinton this past Sunday. They are actually competing on a weekly basis. So in the month of January alone, they're attending three, sorry, I take that back, three tournaments in one month. Every single Saturday they pretty much have given up.
Oh, no.
We have one in February, we did one in December, two in November. So we went from competing three times a year to close to eight or nine times. And that's not including Worcester, which will be the regional Southern Newland Championship on March thirteenth and fourteenth. And fingers crossed, you know, looking to maybe try to get to Worlds in April. That's a really big goal for this team. And they even competed against teams from Canada, California, Texas, Pennsylvania, New York this past weekend at the signature event at WPI. And they were fourteenth and forty-four out of eighty teams. That's really impressive.
So like one thing I'd like to say, so I'd say we're competing with the big dogs now. We're at that level, so my brother and I particularly, or his team and mine, we went to the Worcester Polytechnic Institute this last weekend to compete there. And like, coming in fourteen out of eighty teams of some of the highest, like the most competitive teams in the nation was like a tremendous accomplishment for my team particularly. And like, we, having been, done three years of robotics now, like, I kind of understand what it's gonna take to get to, the ultimate goal is Worlds, the world competition, world championship in Kentucky. And to get there, you have to qualify at regionals, like Ms. Howard mentioned, in March. So personally, I see a lot of potential for one of our teams making it to that event. And it's, it's gonna be more like of a run, but like, I think the reason that we're, we have a chance of going is the fact that we are staying till nine o'clock at night on Friday nights before these competitions, just getting everything so ready so that when the time comes to compete in our ring, we're gonna bring it in. And that's, so yeah, I'm praying that things go well in the next few months, but do well.
Do you guys have any questions for the kids? I know we'd like you to hear from Mr. John Ware and the impact that he sees from the mentor and parent perspective. Does he have any questions for them? Do you have a corporate sponsor in the back of your robot?
Free, so, yeah, yes and no. They don't actually fund us, it is a chewy sticker. That's more of like a joke, I guess. It's just a decoration. The team we paired up with at WPI, they're from Monroe, Connecticut. They're one of the, another highly competitive team. And like one of the things that they like to do with a good luck symbol is just to give out chewy stickers to their alliance team members, so.
Giving credit where credit's due, it's pretty big to Nathan that he has that sticker, because it's kind of recognition from other really good teams that you're as good as us to align with us. So they were laughing, but it does mean a lot in a robotics world. It means like you've reached that next level, that next pinnacle, that you can kind of, like he said, hang with the big dogs. So that's what he's pretty excited about. We don't have a corporate sponsor yet, we would love one. We have accepted some donations from some local companies, AET Labs, but we're always interested in anything we can do to sponsor this team. A lot of grants have been written over the years, and we've been fortunate to be also funded and supported by Nashpee Public Schools with undying support. But it takes a lot of money, it takes a lot of money, a lot of registration fees. Every time one robot goes, it's about a hundred dollars per qualifying, qualifying tournament. So if they, if all four teams go, that's four hundred dollars just to walk in the door. And that's not including building and buying all the parts to put it all together.
So do all of the competitors start with the same kits, or each one is different, they can do whatever?
They really aren't kits, it's just pieces of metal, motors, brains, wheels, gears. You buy all of the parts and the components, and then, as we've realized rather quickly, we rebuy more parts and more components, because we understand, I mean, they've said like hundreds of nuts and bolts to put these together, and they always need more.
So, but for that, it is a standard kit, it is got a standard parts, they all have the same parts to choose from. You can't use anything, you can't design anything, you can't modify certain things, so they're all using the same parts.
Everything has to be that. So we have three developers in our school, when gears are broken, they've designed gears and they use them for practice until new ones come in, but we can't bring those to competition. So everything has to be vex mandated or equivalent. Like if you were to buy nuts and bolts from another vendor, it has to be the exact same type. They have to go to inspection, their robots have to be a certain size, they have to meet certain requirements.
So you mentioned how often you're competing, is that driven by your desire to improve? Or is that part of a planned schedule for the club for the year, or are you just obsessed?
Close to it, but yes, so the fact that we've been competing much more frequently this year is, it helps us to understand the game better, so I'd say strategy wise, as in like learning the best ways to win each match, and like learning how to capitalize on just different mistakes that your opponents may make. Driving has become a super important part of my, like, becoming, so to work with the big dogs, you've got to learn how to drive, learn how to like manipulate these robots in the best way possible. And so we actually have set up a ring in my basement out of, we just cut wood and lots of tiles so that we can practice down there, and that's, that's another. uh, uh, something that's helped us to be so successful is the fact that we can take it home and keep working that, um, but yeah.
There's commitment. They know that if they want to get to Worlds, they have to go to more competitions. So we had a conversation as a team that how could we support them this year? And we were really committed to competing early. They also drive during lunch. I mean, they come in and they spend their lunches in the robotics room and they're driving during their time off and their lunchtime and their programming. So like Nathan said, it's really just a level of commitment to know what your goal is. They set their goals, they know what they want and they've determined how to get there.
Yeah, so I guess that was my question. It is really student driven. You're, you're sort of allowing them the space for what they wanna, how they want to take it.
It's a hundred percent student driven. They don't want to look these robots in this program any longer than I could ever know. It is a hundred percent all them, all the time. They, they want it, you know, I, I will put y'all first out there and Mr. V and I will talk about it and John will help in, John Ware. And yeah, we say this is an opportunity, do you guys want to go? And they say yes, or they come and they ask us, it's really open.
I mean, um, this, this last competition that won at WPI, um, I'd say a month ago, we were like, hey, Ms. Howe, do you think we can go compete here at this national competition? She said, yeah, it's, I'll write up the two hundred bucks for it and then we can go out and compete. Um, and we don't do it very well, so. Any other questions?
Okay, Mr. John Ware.
So don't worry, my, our Elkin students have basically already said all the words that I had prepared for you today. So it's gonna be really short. Um, basically, um, during the rest of the week, besides Tuesday afternoons when I'm working with our students, I'm an engineer at Woodsohl Oceanographic Institution where I work with, surprise, surprise, robots. Uh, Mr. Johnson does as well. So it's a, it's a period that's near and dear to our hearts. Um, but you know, I think VEX is an absolutely fantastic experience that we can provide our students. Um, middle school and high school students with a real genuine engineering spirit. Because what it allows them to do is solve problems in a real way. Um, and that you'll, I've been totally surprised that they're the same problems that I come up against every day in my job. Whether it's, um, having to hurry and get code written the night before because something is going to go to a competition or it's going to go up to see, whether it is, um, someone forgot to bring something and we have to come up with a solution or all of those things, um, it's constantly amazing that they're going to do the exact same thing that I do. And I think it's a fantastic experience for them. Um, sometimes it isn't always what you think of that's going to be a similar experience. I listened to my sons over the weekend have a conversation about how to sneak power tools into a hotel because they had to get something fixed overnight. And I've had a very similar conversation on the dock in Guam on how are we ever going to get this thing done before tomorrow? So it's real world experience that we can provide at a really young age. Um, one of my roles as a senior engineer is hiring, uh, new engineers for Woodsohl. And I've discovered that I've seen this engineering competition on a lot of people's resumes. And it's a great way for me to break the ice with these kids. They're brand new, they just graduated, they have zero work experience. And it's a way that after we get through the usual first couple of discuss, uh, conversations, I can say, hey, what did you do? And we can sort of go off and have a real nice conversation and I can get a feel for what their interests are and their experience level. And, uh, I just think it's a fantastic program. And, um, my last comment would be for the night is that, uh, you know, when Nathan was an eighth grader, we looked at, um, different schools for school choice. You know, we were just trying to look for the best opportunity for our children. And the excellent science, technology and robotics program that we have here at Massey is one of the real reasons that we decided to stay at Massey. So, you know, we, I've heard about the school choice and, you know, it's the same thing for keeping our kids here. And I think it's a fantastic program and it's worth our support. And I'd really love to thank Mrs. Howe, our fearless leader, Mr. Ludi, Mr. Val Strachey and Mrs. DeBoer for all the support that they provided for us over the last company years. So thank you.
So again, tremendous group of young people here, um, we're involved in every single day. We talk about you have to go to work, you have a job, you have to do certain things. Uh, we get to work with these kids, we get to see all the tremendous talents that they have. And, and our job is to put them in a position, uh, to capitalize on every opportunity. So thank you for your support, thank you to Mrs. Howe for her just unbelievable time and effort. She's got young children and a family at home and this is her second family. And to our friends, our parents, uh, you know, thank you for supporting these events and every competition. Uh, you guys spend about as much time as I enjoy at the high school, so that's pretty high to say. So, but thank you very much for the evening and, um, I don't think any further questions, do you have an over time?
I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure to attend a couple of these robotics competitions. Um, and, and what I would like to say to you guys is that it's great that you're finding success and I'm, that's amazing. Um, but I'm just so impressed with, um, how you represent our community when you're traveling to these events. Um, you are respectful, you're just, uh, team players, you're very kind to the younger kids who are learning. Um, very supportive of, you know, the folks who are just getting started like you were three years ago, whatever. And I, to me, that as a, as a mom, but also as a school committee member, I just feel like that, uh, makes me so proud. And I just want to thank you for, um, for representing us so well. So congratulations on all that stuff. I hope you get to play hockey, but, um, that, that means a lot to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Howe and all the parents and the kids from the fifth grade robotics club, which competed in Hockington.
Yes.
Uh, Sunday morning, they were there by eight o'clock. They were there till about two in the afternoon, so it was a long day for them. And, you know, their competition will look different than this one where, you know, they were working as teams. They only had sixty seconds, they would have loved to have the longer time that the older kids had. But, you know, the older kids helping the younger kids, you know, kind of the farm team to, to grow and develop and to be your successor.
That's the hope.
In the future, so just that, you know, great thanks to Mrs. Howe and everyone, um, who was there on Sunday morning. Um, and I know you guys were there even longer, so thank you. So you're a great.
Thank you. Can we have a picture? Committee and all of you and parents too?
Hey, my shit holds your trophies.
Yes. Kind of be behind the.
You want me to take the picture, you want me to? Yeah.
I'm just surprised here, I think there's a half of people who are obsessed with this. That's so much. All right, Nathan, you got, you gotta get front center here, bud. Have you got Nathan in?
Mrs. Howe, you should be in front of him.
No, I should have been front.
There we go, now we're talking.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good job. I like your robot.
I know this is my favorite part and I said that I'm gonna, there's no reason I. We can go ahead. I admit, no, I. Fiasco, the fiasco.
Jane, Jane, you?
So we are. All right, so next agenda is a move, approval of the minutes from January 8th, 2020. Take a look, uh, quick look of them and then I'll entertain a motion to approve. Pull them in.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2020.
Motion by a second.
They're kind of tucked in the middle.
Page thirty five. A motion by Chris, second by Don, any discussion? All right, hearing that, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And yes. Four yes, one abstain, motion passes. Next item of the agenda is for principal of board, just got to do off about. I'm so sorry, you super headboard. I've never said that, whoa. That's, that's like, that's like going, uh, I'm going way back. For the record, she is super headboard. A hundred percent my fault.
So Mike, you touched on it a little bit earlier in the meeting, you have a chart in front of you. So we had this year the innovative classroom learning environment grant program that was open to teachers that closed on December fifteenth. So we had seven applications from the Mashpee Middle High School, six from Quashnet and Coombes had two. And each grantee is listed there. Anne Marie Finn at the high school was selected, she teaches English. Heather Johnson in sixth grade at the Quashnet School and was that, uh, school's grantee. And then Stephanie Sousa from the Coombes School. And Paul Funk and I met with those three individuals on January eighth. Uh, they were doing the guideline sheet, we answered questions and, um, so the process of how they're going about selecting innovative items for their classroom, particularly in furnishings, um, is in place. And all three are in, are incorporating student voice into the process, so. And they will, you'll be invited to, they're really both part of the whole ones.
So how, um, how did you find that evaluation process, like the competition among the teachers?
So a couple of the teachers, um, were sort of a little more outside the box of outdoor classrooms. So where the palette was to really, what, what I used is one of the guidelines. We're trying to test sort of our main content learning spaces. And we also wanted to hit, um, sort of more than just one class of kids. So with Anne Marie Finn, well, she's the English teacher and we got, that is getting a broad range of students. Heather was selected at Quashnet because she's already made, um, inroads into being innovative with furnishings on her own. She, she does little things in her room and so when you go in there, you can clearly see that she embraces sort of options for students. And, um, Stephanie Sousa, the other person that applied was preschool and we really wanted it to be more, um, with us, a little bit more career content learning taking place. And Stephanie Teem, so you're going to put two classrooms with that. And then the other, uh, second mini grant program was for teachers like we talked about. That was an up to twenty-five thousand dollar amount out of school choice. The deadline was November fifteenth. So everyone who applied is listed here. Um, they described what their, uh, project were, was, were, project was, and the amount requested. And then you'll see under the notes in some cases where we might have adjusted, uh, the amount requested. Everyone received letters, they know that it's up to that amount, not beyond that amount. And then you'll see in the notes section two wherever we, uh, moved a request to the operating side.
They're like hearing screens?
So the, so the hearing screens, right now, uh, the vision for preschoolers is done through, I guess the lines come in with a piece of equipment. But the nurse would really like this equipment and it was rather substantial amount that would take a lot out of that twenty-five thousand. So we looked at, um, the Coombes School operating budget to see if that's doable for this year and that's where it got moved to.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Every preschooler, not just this year's.
So what, um, do you think about the idea of using this grant program to fund trips?
Field trips or?
Yeah.
Um, I can support that. In some cases at the lower grades, you sometimes get support through the PTOs, but they don't have an endless supply. And I think anything that prevents us from saying it's ten, like, for example, the grade three trip to Plymouth, that's a ten dollars per student charge, which covers, I believe, the mission and buckets. So I just think we should be able to provide opportunities without a cost to families if we can.
Thanks, Michael. Uh, you know what I think would be cool, um, you know, self-professed data nerd, is if we could categorize these requests into some bins, um, and sort of track this over time to kind of see what were, were the, yeah, are they experiences, are they stuff, are they, um, you know, uh, they, because I can see a lot of actually variety, which is super cool. I mean, um.
We could group them experiences, actual purchased items.
And like within that, you know, is it, uh, yeah, like, yeah, I don't know, I just like the rover project, a bilingual book collection, you know, like things that are, um, I think that would be cool.
No, that's great, I mean, because I, I've seen, you know, like it's interesting that there was several adaptive furnishings kind of.
Yeah.
Sounds pretty close, right, with our innovative classroom kind of project as well. I mean, it'd be very interesting to see where, maybe we can address it that way.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't, it clearly that a lot of the teachers won't step up an ass, but this is kind of a behind the door kind of way of figuring it out, that's cool stuff. I didn't realize it took eight hundred dollars to go to the Mashpee National Wildlife Program.
Well, there's probably more to that for that.
Just to pay for the muscles, huh?
What about, um, the, the iPads for the art room?
Yes.
What does that say, thirty?
Yes, I did double check this with Sean Maroney, um, that is what, what it cost.
Maybe we get one.
I don't know, seventeen hundred dollars with a thirty odd guy?
I, with a cart. But that's the amount she's getting and I double checked with Sean multiple times, I got one extra.
And you make it thirty-one?
And I know, uh, these are listed in the order that they came in, just as a, because there's no, it's only, just to explain the rationale.
And I don't want to, I don't want to squash it down there, but we don't have thirty iPads in the school?
That came up, um, to my knowledge, and I asked Sean this as well, not that would be specifically left alone to be used in the art room.
Because didn't we one for one everybody so far?
iPads, at one point there wasn't a one-to-one for sixth grade.
I meant the Chromebooks.
Oh, no, oh, yeah, they have Chromebooks.
I'm just curious, where, where are the other iPads being used in? If everyone's got Chromebooks.
There's quite a few iPads in Coombes.
Oh, okay.
They use them a lot for.
I'm just curious, I don't want to push back.
Yeah, no, that's where I see them all the time. And then they'll be using in the art area.
No, thirty iPads with a charging card for seventeen hundred bucks, that's pretty good, yeah. And he didn't read the word iPad in there.
She had, she had a backup, they all had to submit things that went with this.
All right, cool.
I, I'm really impressed with what they came up with. I think it's super cool and, um, maybe we should add it to the budget, you know.
It's too, too soon.
Too soon, too soon to last, well, um, but no. But, no, I think it's, um, I, I'm really impressed with the variety. I, you know, I just continue to be impressed when you give teachers opportunities to, um, just to get, to develop, they, they're not, they're not buying a bunch of stuff for themselves. You know, there's nothing in here that's like for a teacher, really. Uh, it's all for the students and, um, I just, I think that's really cool. And just the variety, it's, it's really impressive.
And then, the other questions on the, the.
How long do they have to submit projects?
Those had to be in by fifteen, so I think, um, the grant application window was. October one through November fifteen.
October one, so they have to be submitted. And so everything on this list was funded with only these adjustments at the bottom?
Right, so everything was funded, the only, something might have been moved to operating. So there were people that got a little, so Tom Hoppert sat with the two wheelchairs, he's getting one. And then, um, the diversity week where they asked for, I think it was thirty-one, forty-one, we allocated two thousand. I wasn't quite sure, it was not concrete with the request, so it's up to two thousand based on what they submit to us.
So do we need two wheelchairs? Or was one to be like that?
I'm not sure, the, the only rationale for the two, I'm not aware of two students who would need it at the same time, hoping for one.
Obviously, if we needed a second one, we would be getting a second one.
Well, they could, well, that's if they're all fully in the same filter at the same time, otherwise fifteen, five wheelchairs.
Okay.
And then the last chart shows the mini grant program for students. These are a little bit, um, more challenging to go through because they don't always, they have very cute ideas, but not always, I don't think they always fit. So the ones you see, Peter Gonzalez, you remember him, he was our recipient of our superintendent award. He's gonna be teaching basic life support to sixth graders. And so the supplies he needs, and then also part of the nine hundred was his becoming certified to do that. And he was also currently adoptive, for the startups. Deja Peters' project was funded, which I really love this idea, I wish they'd come up with that, some of the other areas of language, but we have storybooks that might be well-known, but in French, so that would help the kids really master, um, a little bit better. And then the student panels at Quashit has asked for four hundred dollars for the Greeter sweatshirts, they do the AM bus drop-off and car drop-offs. I've noticed they had brand-wearing sweatshirts and so I've inquired, and the PTO is supposed to let me know if the PTO handled that, so we would reimburse the PTO for this. And then they line some signs too, so. Dr. Toby is doing a classroom emergency buckets that have to do with, um, a shelter-in-place drill, where you'd have a few more supplies needed. And the only thing I asked him to get was, I think there should be something that kids could do, and his is mainly a middle high school level, but to occupy time, so whether it's not puzzles, but something that you could distract your mind from worry and like do crossword puzzles, or do word searches or something like that, so fill in some type of a little booklet that went in, everyone that had enough, so he was looking that up for me. And so, uh, Eden Smith wants to do pleats for a cause, which is a he, and I've asked him to tell me what, how many he thinks he would be purchasing. It was kind of a, um, not specific enough. Kayla McCarthy with her zebrafish, as it turned out, she got some funding or the item she needed was purchased somewhere else, but they were, she's getting back to me with some additional information because they want it to be an ongoing project, so Tom Hoppert's desk working is going there. You know, like I said, I just recently got the eight genius hour ones, those are interesting. And then Peyton Dolly, who's a senior, is wanting to do reusable water bottles for the district, since we all have a water bottle, water bottles.
Who's the, who's the district? All sixteen hundred kids?
Yes.
Good.
But that would total more than the five thousand, so why haven't we had...
They have all the way in action?
I know, we have some sources to purchase them.
The one that this was kind of like the pilot program? What are some of the lessons learned?
Well, um, I think from a systems perspective, is making sure the behind the scenes is set in place, so how are we making sure that people are buying their innovative furnishings? How, I want to track everything, but I don't want a lot of little things hitting school choice. So we've, you know, developed, we're for that, we've given a little outnumber for the teacher grants, they're going to use that, and we're still gonna review everything that comes through. So that's been a little bit of, um, thinking through on the, on the spot, I guess. And then same with the students, it's, uh, like for Peter, he'd already taken his knife, his course, so we had to re-endorse him. And then we was putting a purchase order in for the other items. But, um, I think for the kids, maybe a little bit more, um, descriptor, it's, it's not, like for example, there was a student who was asking for a hundred dollars to take a, an outside-of-school art course, flats, which really does not fit with what our expectation is. So I think we need to maybe make it a better description for them. But I think that's all coming out of, sixth grade has a genius hour where they're exploring something with their passion and they're developing a project based on that, so, but I got a batch of them and I figured that out, how which teacher was, which of the kids, which I think is great, they should be encouraged. One wanted to do that sort of a water filter, not very much, only some of them are very much.
Are we somehow publicizing that with any issue with schools, or what, um, kids are doing?
Not yet.
That you intend to?
Yeah, I mean, all of these are, you know, we can have these kids come and share here. We're definitely going to promote, we're gonna have a tour. So the teachers, they can, they have to sort of write a report about the new grant and then invite some to share, and then they'll definitely be innovative classroom, they'll have a filter.
Yeah, just wrote that down below for next year, if you have some kind of big cycle review of the, the grant program, any innovative classrooms?
Um, how, uh, who evaluates the, you might say it, but I, is it just you, or is there, is there a panel, or?
It's open.
Okay. So the, there's no, the principals aren't involved in either filtering anything, or...
Well, they, so when we, when I compile the list, the blue list, that will share with all three principals for any input in terms of, can this, can you find a place in your budget for this? And any input on the projects, but not beyond that. And we, I keep having a plan to set with principals because I do find that student in the lines is much challenging to read through and make sure that they're what we want, uh, I think.
So when do you think you'll get feedback from, uh, teachers in terms of whether this is a, you know, something they want to see us repeat?
Well, we can, we can do, we can, the people that received them, we can do a quick Google form for that, and then we can also, you know, reach out to, which, you know, can be a topic that a staff member would like to say, you know, who benefited from it really great, we're gonna talk about it with your peers, your colleagues, and, like, we'll make sure we publicize it well for them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure the people who got the grants probably pretty supportive of the program, but I just mean like everybody else, I mean, we have how many teachers? Two hundred and six, something like that. Yeah, so, I mean, and you said that some of them are teens, but we're still, that's roughly ten percent of them are getting some types of, you know, a work, doesn't seem like a large percentage. So I'm just curious if they would feel like, oh, we needed more time, or would this be better to run in the spring, you know, when I'm kind of planning for the fall, or just that type of feedback, I guess.
Well, I definitely think for next year, we won't make that much more of a heads-up notice. This was sort of decided late August, early to September.
Yeah.
Let's crank it out so it could have a benefit for this year, so that was like the October, the end of the window. We can make it out, typically, actually.
Another distraught is done too, she wants to recreate the, the forms, everything. Alright, anybody else who can move on? Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, next, did you report the business administrator, Mr. Funk taking away?
Um, well, you have any tactic, your budget to act on, uh, or do you, uh, so if you have any questions in the, uh, budget, and, and just to, to kind of bounce off on those, um, you know, tracking the, the new grants and so forth. We're gonna learn them, just like we do anything else, we're running through the population budget, then back them out, we put the school choice, now they have an all of these little grants, and they are tracking in our Excel sheets, so we better all set up, I'm looking for, so. Are there any questions on the, uh, budget, so? To me. So we're approximately halfway through. Almost, almost. Uh, how do you feel in, in total? I, I feel very, very good. And, uh, I will pull it up for next week, on, on my projection, I'll be going, it's that will be beyond the halfway part. If the people, if the meeting, that will leave, it's February twenty-second or around that, so we're getting deep into, don't see the end of that, kind of, so. Any, any surprises that you didn't anticipate would come up? Not really, we had one, well, I mentioned that's paid out of this, a lot of them, I was, it's a little more than that, but it's nothing that, that, uh, you know, it's something we have to do. But no, other than that, we're paying for certain things, and, right, you know, some of the things that, you know, will help us out this year, probably give us some additional funds at the end of the year that we won't have to back out to, uh, every year, last year to school choice, where we moved a couple of paraprofessionals over to the, um, preschool account, uh, from the budget, so that would give us some, you know, that. And, um, we didn't fill a position, we have that, um, DLA position that we didn't fill, so. Uh, we pulled out, I think in February, we put on all those positions. Alright. Yep. Huh?
I'll wait till you get to...
We'll, we'll, we'll wait.
Just wait, we have, we have done grants, so we're not...
Any questions on the budget?
So when, if somebody asks, you know, our budget can be increasing, uh, as a moment falls, um, you know, that big hit to operating expenses from out of districts and associated transportation costs is a, is a huge reason, right?
Right. One of the things, one of the things that I wasn't expecting this year, just bouncing back, in the budget, is, you know, notice that the special ed transportation is, uh, in the negative. And the reason for that is not, we'll look to count, you know, audio will cover that, but the reason is we've got two same thing runs that were fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars each, you know, and a couple of things, a couple of, uh, students, uh, were, um, placed by DCF, and they were, you know, whatever. Alright, I'm gonna do the grants, please.
Yeah, so I'm just, you do. Um, I just was, I was looking at the, the FY twenty grants totals, the amount awarded, and why that doesn't match the total grants that are in, as in the, the budget package for twenty? And...
But some of those are competitive grants.
No, I'm not, I'm not including those. Because I think every, lines one through eight should, wouldn't that equal our total grants coming in? So five oh one, two A, four sped, maybe inclusive, maybe inclusive learning environments comes out and that's the thirty. Oh, it's thirty over, so maybe that's why. Is that inclusive preschool learning environment, uh, awarded?
Nothing ahead of that, shit.
But, yeah, so, would it mean the FY twenty number?
She's trying to tie to this younger...
I gotta find out what she signed to.
Yeah, she was close, but that's close.
I just took out the inclusive...
Yeah, okay, that explains it.
Inclusive preschool is not gonna be...
I don't know why that wouldn't count in our FY twenty total.
What's that?
So the FY twenty total on page seven of the budget narrative is seven forty-four zero nine-nine.
Yep.
And I just can't get there from your budget, from your grants spreadsheet.
Uh, I came up with seven seven four one nine four.
That's what I got to.
Okay, you got that figure?
Yeah.
Take out, take out thirty thousand dollars because that grant is not gonna be funded next year. So, I mean, you're pretty close, I'm down to, uh, seven forty-four, um, one nine four.
Right, I'm just asking you to check the FY twenty number.
In the narrative.
In the narrative.
So in the narrative, we put seven forty-four oh nine nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For twenty.
For twenty, for this year.
Not for twenty-one. So why would you take the thirty out? I don't think you would. I just want you to check that number, that's all.
Seven what? Seven forty-four?
Yeah, in the narrative.
Right.
That's all. It doesn't seem to match with what we have on the other sheet.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
A little slow.
Track. Well, you don't have to do it now, I just...
Yeah, and the other, the only thing I want to say too about the, the revolving accounts that we're dealt with grants, anybody else got a question about grants?
Well, I was gonna say, that grant, is that a competitive grant then?
It is.
We're not gonna have next year the preschool?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to caution again, that continue to see these revolving accounts increase in value, we're not spending any money. We've been hurt on that before. These are all visible accounts available to the town.
Right, absolutely. The, uh, the community school, we use that, that's, that's our summer school, and I buy software, you know, the, the one that we use at the high school now, as an alternative, so, um...
Yeah, I thought we said a ten thousand dollar women's...
On what?
Funders and running account balances. No? Is that ten?
We can, I mean, I don't remember that.
No, we did discuss, we did discuss that, I can, honestly can't remember.
I don't remember whether we did that.
We've discussed this multiple times, I mean, you know, I get really, I mean, athletic gate receipts, I know we're limited in what we can do, what we can use that money for, but let's figure a plan out and recover that money and get it off the books, you know?
I'll talk to the athletic director. You can see the preschool, that's, that's going down because we did move, at, at the request, uh, we moved a couple of paraprofessionals over into that, and that's gonna free up money in the appropriation.
Can we check on that, Kathy, about the revolving account balances? I have a very distinct memory of us.
Yeah, I, I remember speaking about that.
Well, it's gonna be very, very difficult to take that community school is, uh, I'll look for alternatives.
Maybe we didn't for that reason, but it's...
I'll look for alternatives on that, but we use that to pay the summer school teachers. Uh, I buy the software out there, which is around twelve thousand dollars, you know, goes up a little bit here, but a good figure is about twelve thousand for the software, and those are the only two expenses that we have.
I just think we should treat, you don't have to do the same kind of documentation you do for school choice, but we should have some kind of notes in here that says that, yeah, it's a thirty-four thousand dollars, but we estimate thirty-two thousand will be covered for summer school, like, software or something like that. So we have the answer.
Just add a, call them, do it this way, a call them for incumbences?
Yeah, exactly.
So I can, I can do it, yeah, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
It's in the last page, is your, um, school choice, so we're, where we at right now. You'll notice the increase on twelve thirty-one and up to sixty, uh, twenty-five, that, that's, you know, going into the rest of the year, we'll see it at that rate. And then the adjustment will be made in July, uh, two thousand and twenty.
Right, so the sixty represents additional students?
That is correct. That the, the additional projected students, and then, you know, the whole special ed thing I talked about, that, that adjustment takes place in July. We do have on the budget, um, I had some transfers, I will table that, if we didn't have it on, there's a bug. Any other questions?
Can you look back on the school choice? So, we were projecting this upon which number, forty-eight, or forty-seven?
That is correct. That is correct. We're basing it around, uh, five hundred thousand, in fact, it would be, uh, a hundred, uh, school choice students, which would be five hundred thousand. I don't set those numbers.
No.
So, the party dead now. So the bottom dead now.
So we're basically, we've got six more months to go, so about seventy-eight thousand for additional revenue for FY20. But we didn't anticipate.
How much?
The difference between the forty-something and the sixty-something?
Yeah.
Times the number of months.
But we know the money that's coming in now for now.
No, no.
Okay, right.
For next year.
Got it.
Let's get back to the...
We know where you're going, Don, we know where you're going. The only person that can reconsider is you, because you're the only person that voted yes.
But if you remember, going back to the channel at the beginning of that conversation, that a lot of these came after the fact. Two hundred and seven thousand.
No, I know, but...
Oh, okay. I know, you wanna, you wanna get it now.
Well, no, no, all I'm saying is, based on what you're, what we're seeing come in and what we were budgeting, there's going to be roughly seventy-eight thousand, that's called seventy-five thousand dollars additional revenue coming into school choice. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Nailed it.
Yeah, I like that figure. I like that figure.
Right, and that additional revenue is not going to be in our FY20 budget.
That's correct.
That is correct.
That's correct.
And we have as yet to define our process for allocating school choice funds for the FY21 school year because that's being revisited under the advice of our administration and teachers, which we did not have the benefit of this year.
You get the point?
Yeah.
Just making my point.
Okay.
And that concludes my reports. As I said, I tabled that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Potts. So the, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item nine, curriculum update to table to our next regular scheduled meeting because Dr. Hanscom is out ill. Second? Yes.
Second, are you second?
Of course, second. So a motion by George, second by Chris, to table curriculum update by Assistant Superintendent Hope Hanscom until the next regular scheduled meeting, any discussion? And next scheduled regular meeting, not the next regular. Any discussions? Hearing that, how do you vote, Don?
Yes.
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 Yes, all right. And we'll table that to the next scheduled regular meeting. Okay, that's a tough one to say. Any subcommittee reports?
Do you want to say anything for negotiations?
Negotiations, we have a meeting tomorrow. We're not expecting a break for a while. We're now getting down to where the all submissions should be completed.
So I have a report from the planning and construction committee meeting. This, we met after our last regularly scheduled meeting. The recommendation was made to the capital improvement, I always think of the P as capital program, program committee, is that right?
Wait, how does this connect to some of these, I'm sorry?
The planning and construction is a subcommittee.
Oh, this board?
I guess it's not a subcommittee, I guess it's, it's a committee that we sit on. We have a school committee seated.
Okay, all right, I just wasn't tracking.
I was gonna save this for item number fourteen, actually, but this fits right here, so... I just wanna let you know, so some change has happened. So the planning and construction committee meeting, there's a picture here of what our, what we're set up at right now with the fields. Is this stadium one? Oh, there's two pictures, one with the stadium and one with the... The reason I'm bringing this up is, so the recommendation was made by the planning and construction committee to pass on to the CIP and the Board of Selectmen to approve synthetic turf for the stadium, synthetic turf for the upper fields, and the addition of lights in the upper fields. The reason that we recommended is that would have negated any of the scheduling issues that we currently have with the fields. Long story short, because they're all natural gas, grass fields, they're continually competing for space, there's no time to really do any maintenance to those fields. And when they can do maintenance in the summertime, it's a time they should be doing maintenance. This project to do all of the field synthetic was nine million dollars. And there were several options provided by Gale Associates, including the stadium only, the stadium and something of the upper field, stadium and something of the lower fields, et cetera, et cetera. So to repeat, the recommendation by the planning and construction committee was to do the stadium, the upper fields, and then the adding the lights to the upper fields, the natural gas fields, the lower fields, nothing has been done to that. It went to CIP and it was, I guess, I guess I would say disapproved, right? That they appropriate things there. They didn't approve the recommendation from the planning and construction committee, and their recommendation was to have, give us a hundred thousand dollars, not us, but to provide a hundred thousand dollars to do some required maintenance on the upper fields. Upon getting some information from Gale Associates, they said that a hundred thousand would be some very minor maintenance to that field, and the field to be used in any capacity that they recommended be, was it four hundred thousands?
He said a hundred fifty thousand would be for minor improvements.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on this.
And then, but comprehensive repairs would be around three hundred thousand for rebuilding that field and also recoding the track. Those were the two areas that the CIP committee said, well, you know, what, the track needs to be done in the backfield. That's what they were thinking of, but that hundred thousand was just a number thrown out. It's not based on anything.
So I know Patty, and again, I don't wanna bore Jim up, but Patty recommended, what about just doing the stadium synthetic? Not only would they do in the stadium synthetic, they're also moving some of the track and field pits and stuff around, and they're making the field suitable for regulation soccer, which is not suitable for right now because of the width. So not only would it have a synthetic field, there's a, there was quite a few other...
I believe field hockey and field hockey, lacrosse, soccer, football would be able to access that stadium.
And there was some improvements, they were bringing water into the area, there was improvements to the curbing. It's a comprehensive, and it's two point five million for just that. So, Selectman Gottlieb basically reached out and said, okay, so what's the school committee think? So that's what I'm bringing up about what you guys think about the several different options that were, that we have in front of us, there's many of them. And what was recommended again, and what we've been told for the hundred thousand, and what we would really like to recommend. Just, it was a discussion we can pass it on as a committee to CIP.
But obviously, this, whether it was a seven million dollar project or two and a half for the stadium only, is would be debt exclusion and not have been part of the CIP.
The concern, I think there's some concern that was brought up, was that they didn't wanna have a competing, a competing debt exclusion against wastewater. Which was the ultimate concern. And you know, I have to admit, I'll shut up after this, one of the things we discussed at planning and construction when they did ask for my input for the school committee, and I said, that one thing I can think of is that not only do they need, do we need to find some way to allow all of our sports to play, we need to be able to provide DPW with a timetable to do maintenance on these fields, which they don't have right now, is that schools, there's several schools of our side, I think they gave us a dozen or so schools of our size, the same number of kids and the same sports, all across the Commonwealth have all synthetic fields. And so this wasn't something to put you out of the box. And I was looking at it too, this is a, this is a, this is a kind of a feather in our cap too, this is a, you know, a school choice trumpet, trumpet sound. We have, you know, world-class football teams and soccer teams and, you know, field lacrosse teams, and we also have world-class fields, so...
And our current fields have drainage issues as well as this.
Yeah.
Maintenance is...
The upper fields specifically.
Unplayable to...
And this is a lot of talk and a lot of presentations condensed down into ten minutes, so I apologize. But it's happening quickly, and we did, I honestly didn't expect it to be the pushback. But I do understand where they're coming from with the wastewater exclusion. And kind of setting a priority for the town.
And what, what is the lighting up there? Is it really dark?
There's no light.
There's no light up there?
Only the stadium.
It's the stadium.
So one of the things that I had heard originally was that this would reduce the maintenance cost? Is that, I don't see anything in here that talks about the potential cost saving?
They talked...
No, what?
I was just gonna say, they did ask that question in CIP, and, I mean, there is still some maintenance they have to do with these fields and part of the price of clearly equipment. So there would be some freeing up of DPW workers in terms of what's required now. But there still is some. I mean, it's not a huge, it's not gonna be a huge difference.
It's not. And honestly, most of the capacity, by the option we recommended, most of the capacity that's built to DPW would actually be thrown into the lower fields because they're not getting any, any improvement that would be at DPW now. So that was kind of like they're not hitting out from DPW. If we only did the stadium and the upper field synthetic and left the other ones untouched, the DPW would be able to expend time and effort now to get those fields up to speed.
So the question I have was, I mean, didn't DPW initiate this process?
So combined, we had it initiated just over a year ago, a stadium turf field. And I think at that time, it might have been one point five million, it was a lower than two point five. And that's when then CIP said, let's do a study of usage in the fields and all that and come up with plans. And I think some of the conversation at CIP was, why hasn't there been a conversation about this? Or are we gonna promote this? But everything was contingent on getting a decision from the town, which way are they going, what are they gonna support before we then decide what action steps should we take? Because, you know, there's gathered all the information for this year CIP. There would be a debt exclusion. Not for the money to fix the upper field, but put that in, I suppose.
But the proposal was presented by DPW.
And yes, and they, are they advocating for it, or are they just saying this is what it costs?
From the presentation and Natrover is there as well, we were all advocating for it. It's just wastewater cloud and whatever that debt exclusion is gonna be for this year. I did ask, is it an annual amount for wastewater? What is the amount? And it seemed to indicate it's sort of like big every five years.
Underfacing?
I guess. I just was looking to try to see whether there could be a commitment from the town on a specific year, they might fund the stadium, so we could plan. Because there is a lot of, you have to plan for that. And if you tell me, okay, well, we'll pretty much try to do it in two years, okay? I'll deliver that, but if it's just always on the list, I don't know.
The price on it, what?
Yes.
Sorry, that word.
So, I mean, that's a good point. If it was approved from a town meeting and then subsequently approved at the ballot box, right, there in May, what was the timeframe that would it take to build this, to do this? How long are the fields gonna be out of commission for them to do what to do?
I don't know. I think the upper fields would not be such a heavy lift because they're not ideal to use now. I would assume the stadium would try to be done in a, as off of the season as you can find. Or we would just have to play all the wave games for the year. They do do that sometimes for different situations. Not ideal, but doable.
So the attempt would be to, in theory, to do it this year, if you're trying to reform the way?
For the stadium?
Yeah.
I mean, Gale Associates, upon approval, was ready to start. You start as soon as they give permission to start.
But what would be the soonest they could start if it had to be approved?
Right after the...
Yeah, July.
No.
Later?
No. Those meetings you made.
It could be in a special town meeting, but it still has to have the votes.
Right, so you can do it if it's a vote, so...
Town meeting, if it was on the special, you could, they're gonna fund it. In theory, fund immediately or for some of the voters who agree that it would work.
When you, I'm sorry?
So in theory, they would be able to start in June.
So just an FYI, the total capital request from all departments came to two million six ninety-two. And then they reduced cable funds of forty thousand, the rec revolving account would pay for the van, the rec department bonds, which is seventeen, seven forty-two. They were ballparking with seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven sixty-nine out of free cash, and a million one ninety-one eighty-eight out of the capital stabilization fund. Which still leaves, because apparently, I guess it's a Selectman policy, that fifteen percent of free cash goes to the stabilization fund, that was something they put in place. So that would go in first, then they would take out what they needed, and it would still grow the stabilization fund by three hundred thousand for this.
You mentioned that the funding for the sewer, wastewater treatment, drought is maybe it's in comps of five years.
Well, no, he indicated, Andrew Gottlieb indicated there was sort of ways, so it was a bigger piece, and then it might be, and then it goes bigger again every five years, but I don't know, they didn't have a number.
But the question, the question asked to us has been phasing, that they wanna do, the CIP wants to give us a hundred thousand dollars, and it's not gonna go to someone's fund the DPW. I mean, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars for DPW to do repairs. Or if we give it to Gale Associates, it's localized, you know, sections of the track they would replace, very, very small amount of work to be done. Or do we have some other recommendation that we would like to pass up? Or we could not, not have recommendations, or what you guys wanna do? I mean, planning and construction provided their recommendation already to CIP. Disapproved.
So who's on the... So it's just approved by who?
CIP.
Be respectful, who's on CIP again?
So Rodney, Bones, Miss Sal, Chuck Gazer, John Baird, new members Ed Sarno, I think this is me, and we got lead, and Matt Richardson.
Do you call it the vote list?
On the, they didn't even vote on the, they just, we can't support the seven million. And it was this morning, and I asked, I said, I know we met last weekend, so did you mention the hundred thousand? And I said, I feel like that's a waste of money, that's not really fixing what our issues are with our field usage and the drainage, and I don't think a hundred thousand would do that. And I did say, we've been asking multiple years, we've had conversations with Catherine, Natrover has complained about that field, but it's never gotten fixed, which became a conversation. But I just said I would advocate for moving towards the debt exclusion for just the stadium only. And this, this is what they said, well, you know, to your board, it's your board. My personal opinion was that, but they don't want your opinion.
So this is CIP?
Yes.
And the chair, who's the chair?
I think so, I'm not sure.
I mean, this has kind of been thrown our lap, like again, we didn't start this.
Personally, I would support us the stadium one day. I would like if the fields, of the upper fields, I know they have variance issues for all they use.
One is unplay, almost completely unplayable. And the other has significant issues, meaning if you get an inch of rain, you're missing two or three days on that field, at least.
I guess what I'm getting at is, because I know now with the latest school start and all that, it means more later, it gets dark, you know, especially on this time of year. Is it worth even considering having lighting, lighting? Is it worth even considering having lighting, without doing the turf?
It becomes more of an issue of resting the fields, and there's no season to rest, I mean, the recommendation of DPW is to rest a field for at least one full season. And it's really hard to do any repair when your fall season's utilizing all that space right through November, then it's hard to grow, it's hard to treat, it's hard to do those things. So, but right now, the highest upper level field is, is not utilized.
I was thinking of the safety reasons, you know, the lighting is important. If they're being used, if they're not being really used, then, you know, maybe we can do something else.
And we can think of, I mean, we mentioned this at the Planning and Construction meeting too about phasing it out. Because one thing that's interesting about these fields, the more synthetic fields that you make it once, the larger chunks of replacements you have at the same time. It's between 10 to 15 years to replace the kind of, with a million dollars a field. So if you have all three fields at the same time, that's three million bucks every 10 to 15 years. So, you know, this kind of goes back towards the spot where you end, do the stadium, two years from now we'll do the upper fields, you know, then we'll do some improvements of the lower fields. I mean, I, you know, there's so many different aspects here, and at the end of the day, this has zero to do with this. And we can just provide, hey, as a school committee, we can see the benefit for the school, you know. I mean, I see a lot of benefit to having synthetic fields. The downside is, is that, there's really no downside for us, we'll have to figure out how to fund it, you know?
So what do they want, email or whatever or something from the chairs and school committee?
I mean, if we want to make a recommendation, we can pass it up as a, pass it up through the, our member on the CIP right here, you know? If we don't want to make a recommendation, I don't want to push anyone either way, you know?
So we don't have to step forward or vote?
No.
No, there's nothing really to vote on, it was just what you guys.
Our recommendation is stadium only, I mean, whatever you need.
I mean, are there any recommendations at all? So Chris recommends stadium only?
Well.
Hi. So, I'm thinking about a town voter. And the case for wastewater has been laid out pretty well. It's been discussed for, you know, yeah, since I've lived here. And the fact that we're on the precipice of actually doing something is fairly exciting. But I don't feel as a town voter, I've heard a case made for new athletic turf, or why we need it, and what is the impact. And so when I think about that, as a, you know, then as a strategy representing the schools, I feel like we're kind of setting ourselves up for failure unless we have some articulated rationale. And then I keep going back to the fact that, you know, yes, we recognize there's problems with the field, but it was, they're DPW's field. So, I, I mean, I, I think maybe I would like to, to know what that is. I would like to know what that, and to say that the proposal costs 7 million, and oh, they won't give us that, so we're gonna start with 2.5, let's explain why. You know, like, I think, I would be in favor of our, providing a rationale for that proposal that gives you a bit more support at CIP, that explains it and sort of says, this is why it's a waste to throw $100,000, which is probably gonna be more like $250,000 to actually get these fields to the condition we need them to be. We could effectively apply that money to the stadium and get this, 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 and this out of the deal, or, so, I mean, it's not my.
Well, I think your comments about the narrative that goes along with this is almost mimicking Andrew's words exactly, because that was his point. But we also felt, Catherine in particular, that between, we didn't really, we can start to communicate sort of a plan, but we didn't, we didn't do it yet because we need to know, we're not gonna do all of that and not have the board of selectmen support us. So we wanted to kind of engage that. But she and I and others feel very strongly that we would have ample time to very well communicate the why behind it, all of the options and all of that. So it's not, that's what was basically his first comment, which I counter for, I don't agree with that.
I am only thinking about the conversation that happened in town around when and how they were gonna replace their fields. And that was a pretty intense public discussion. And I just, I don't, I mean, I appreciate your optimism, and we're a much smaller town, and, you know, maybe it is a little bit easier, but, I don't know, I just feel like we should have some numbers. How many people turn out to our football games? How many more games can we have on our fields with the stadium? I mean, I feel like there's some data that would just make it a bit more compelling. I'm just trying to wear my Mashpee voter hat because I would hate for us to get shot down. But back to your original question about the $100,000, I think if they're saying, here, we'll give you $100,000 to fix the fields now, and we agree to place it on the warrant in, at this time, for the stadium or whatever it is, I feel like that, then that at least gives us a path forward that's not ambiguous. But to just offer us the money without any sort of recourse of how we move forward seems a little, I don't want to say sloppy, but it just seems like kind of not, not strategic, I guess. So that, that's, I don't know if they'd really offer any more than that. George, you have anything?
If we're gonna be competing groups or on the same dial up as the wastewater, we really have to compete our campaign, just why we're gonna be.
I don't know if we're competing. It's just, are we yet? I don't know.
The timing.
Yeah.
The timing.
And there's been no, there's been no messaging so far that said this is, this is not a revenue generating enterprise. I mean, you know.
The turf.
The turf. I mean, you know, there's, you know, pretty, pretty many people have been discussing, there are, there are schools out there that have these beautiful synthetic fields, and they do get other teams, especially in the summertime, coming and paying to use their fields. But that was never part of our discussion about what it was all about, that these are original, original fields that have never really been, had the opportunity to be correctly maintained on an annual basis because of the usage and, and the uneven turf on the upper fields. And that if, if we were able to get, you know, talk about, what, what do we need to do in a minimum to ensure that we can field all of our, our folks on the field? And that was, that was the option that was presented to the, to the CIP. So if we're, if we're gonna try to do this as a narrative of selling, selling how this is gonna make the town money or something like that, it's not a, it's not a doable message.
Oh, I don't think about.
Sorry. I wasn't thinking about making money, I was thinking about a PR campaign, just surviving the, this has to be done, and that it's not a profit making thing, but just, we need to educate.
No, I agree with that. I agree with that. I do think that, we don't have time to do that, unfortunately. But I, I think that would be something we can maybe discuss in the future, just on ourselves, about getting smart on it, because, you know, let's think about, okay, then if we do piecemeal, piecemeal improvement, like, they put in this email right here, and I apologize if I don't have it, you know, the delay, one year delay with making the improvements we need to the, to the, the fields as they are, would cost us an additional $730,000. Based on doing the, the required fixes to the stadium and the upper fields, and then waiting a year, plus the 3% increase in pricing, and then doing the, this stuff, so. There's really not a, right now, we don't have anything to say except it's gonna cost more money if we wait.
Really?
I mean, that's all we have right now. And it's, you're right, I don't, you know, it's, it's hard, it's gonna be hard for me to even sit here and say, I can say why it would be important to have it, and the good things would come out of it, but I don't know if I could sit here right now with five minutes off the top of my head and say that we need to spend seven and a half million dollars. I think it'd be awesome if we could. What's a big difference to students?
What about athlete safety?
Well, that's why we don't use the upper field.
I mean, but compared between grass and turf? There's just gotta be.
We have, we have, we put that in position.
I mean, currently, we have roughly, what, 50% of this rural high school as student athletes, is that correct?
I'd say it's probably a little, little lower than 50%. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but between 35 and 50%.
So I think for, for you as a committee, it's just whether you want CIP to know that you support X number of dollars out of this year's CIP to go to improving the upper field. That's really the only option on the table or not, because I don't know whether that's justified, if you then hope to tear it all up for a few years, that seems like a lot of money. It's not necessarily going to solve some of the usage issues, but, etc., maybe it's a band-aid wish. So I guess getting a general consensus from this committee.
And there was a discussion at that CIP about who's doing the work either. Was that an assumption that Gale Associates was gonna do the work, or DPW or something?
That was not the thing they talked about, being contracted out, that was another, so there was no conversation around that. I don't think the $100,000 is enough to make it fix based on Gale, who knows what they're doing here.
Do you want to defer this back to DPW?
Well, I mean, I guess it's not, technically, it's not our problem.
Well, somebody asked for our.
No, 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 but I mean, the part, if they decide not to address the fields and do the turf, if they've decided that that's not what they're gonna do, and how they repair the fields and prepare them for our teams, is.
It's the same as it always is.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, they've got to figure out how to do that. So if Catherine thinks that she needs that $100,000 in order to accomplish that, then...
Or more.
Yeah, or more, then, I mean, I guess.
She was not part of them developing the number.
So she, so that number's not really real, it's just what they can spare.
It was what, that was before everything was tallied, the things were changed between last and then this week, so that was all figured out last week.
So would you be willing to defer this back to DPW? Any kind of recommendation to just say it's up to DPW to figure out the money they need to make the upper field usable for the least impacted scheduling kind of.
It's gonna work in itself, we don't have a control.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. No, I agree. I just said, this is, I mean, this does impact us though, and we, you know, it's part of our, it's always been part of our purview to advocate for the students, and so I want to make sure that we have as much discussion on it as we want to, like, again, this just came up this morning, so.
I mean, I think it's essential for us to state what we wish to see, because if, otherwise, if we are on board, that's exactly what we're gonna get.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, if our goal or desire is for improvements, then, you know, we shouldn't be afraid to state that. I personally don't know that I have enough information, you know, to really understand here in 10 minutes, you know, unless you make a, a fully informed decision. But, you know, just, you know, on the surface of it, knowing how those fields are utilized, you know, knowing particularly, you know, one of the impacts of the change in the school's start time is the fact that they need lights on those fields. We cause that. And if we're not gonna advocate for it, you know, we're not addressing the problem that currently exists. Unless we're gonna advocate that they don't do daylight savings stuff, that would be the only option, right?
Let's go out on that whole.
Yeah, let's do that. Not today, please.
But where are the lights in all this? I, I don't understand. There's no lights now, the lights aren't part of.
The.
The lights are part of.
That's part of the $7 million.
So they're part of this, I might assume they have $540,000.
So why don't we, why aren't we advocating for that in lieu of the stadium field and track?
If they're not using the field, you'd have to do more than just the lights, because that, those fields are unusable.
The lights are part of changing those fields to synthetic. There was no plan, there was no plan to go up to the upper field and install lights in a grass field. I'm sure they can give us a number for it, but I guarantee you, that would be, you know, a million some dollars.
But by preparing the stadium and, and doing these enhancements that you talked about, then we don't need to use the upper fields, and so we have the ability to, to, the sports that will, by adding lacrosse and field hockey and soccer and things to.
And having the lights, so we could get, I might, many more games could take place instantly. There's no more option.
But that doesn't address the issue of the practice students, right?
Except you could practice on that stadium.
And it would reduce the scheduling costs. It would minimize, it would, it would get rid of the law, but it would reduce it by making that a synthetic, doing the improvements to the stadium.
Did Andy say whether our opinion would at all alter the outcome of whether this goes on the warrant?
Your opinion is mainly towards some amount of money from CIP to fix the upper field. It really wasn't about, well, which option do they support, because, you know, school committee member on, maybe, maybe.
The recommendation of a, a large group of very, including me in that group, a very large group of very smart individuals made a recommendation for minimal discovering problems, and it was denied. So we just need to recommend what we want to do in the future, and I'm thinking that in the, in the, in the interest of time, I think that we should move it back to DPW to have them provide a number to CIP for the, the most bang for the buck amount of money they need to work on the stadium and the upper fields to minimize scheduling until we figure out what we're gonna do with synthetic fields. That's my recommendation.
And then to your other point about communication, if that's sort of a band-aid for now, then we need to decide, are you gonna support, it might probably be more like eight million, what do we want to support for next year's CIP? So we could start and have a year-long, it's all we.
And, and talk about it?
But there isn't a third option of planning and construction revising their recommendation to be, to, to focus on the stadium in the near term and have a sort of staggered approach that allows us to look at this as an out-year process.
Unfortunately, that should have been done at CIP. They should have discussed the options. They are in the capital improvement program. This is a capital improvement. Planning and Construction was just, was just navigating the engineering and the, providing the information about what each individual thing would do for the, for the town.
But I mean, if that's the choice, then I, I'm not surprised that someone, you know, that with wastewater looming, that someone rejected the idea of putting 7.5 million dollar debt exclusion on the warrant. But if it were a 2.5 million dollar debt exclusion, would that calculus be different? I guess.
I have no idea. Can we just get a recommendation? If you guys want to make a recommendation, we don't have to have one. I'm just, we're passing on a message from Andy, because he's, I think, trying to make sure that we have input on the amount of money that is recommended by CIP. There is no more dog in the hunt for getting the stadiums built this year from CIP, as far as I understand. It's just how much money they'll give us to do improvements in the future.
Just in response to your point, I did bring up to try to persuade the group to consider a phased option with a $7 million project and going with the two and a half million for the stadium, which that group basically led with the selectmen piece for, with the stadium.
Yeah, I just, that's, it's just if you have the planning and construction committee behind you making that recommendation, it might have planned it a little differently, I guess, is what I wonder. But.
Well, that could be part of the recommendation too, if, if you want the, I'll shut up in two seconds, Don, I promise. If, if you want, if we defer to DPW to provide the information, that can be put right back to the Planning and Construction Committee. And if that group wants to move towards that direction to recommend, now, okay, two options. Option one is, we just do the stadium. Option two is, we get, you know, $350,000 for a useful, actual, meaningful improvement to the fields, then, I, I think that's fair enough. It also kind of takes it out of our hands, because we really shouldn't be having this spirited debate about it, because we can't do a day thing.
Well, this is kind of reminds me of this project, right?
Probably this project.
And the roof project, which then morphed into other aspects, right? And we had to advocate for that. And it's, to me, this. And we had to advocate for that, and it's, to me, that's the same thing. Now, if we want an artificial turf stadium, that's what we need to be advocating. They may say no, but at least they know we're a group.
I am prepared to advocate for artificial, and that's obviously where we need to go. I agree with you. But I just, like you said, no one asked me whether Quasnet needed a new roof. DPW told us we needed a new roof, and then we had to say, yes, we support having a new roof. So, you know, if the question is, you know, do we collectively support a transition to artificial turf for our fields, I would be comfortable saying yes. Under which timeline and how that happens, I, you know, I kind of defer to planning and construction and DPW to tell me what our best options are, given that we have this wastewater thing looming, and with that under consideration, I think it's a little tongue deaf to take a $7 million proposal to CIP right now, and I just don't, I kind of don't understand how that happened, but we weren't involved in that. We might not have gone about it the same way. I guess technically you were involved.
Well, I'm just saying, in no time has it ever brought up in planning and construction that we, that there was going to be a multimillion dollar debt exclusion on that warrant for roof stuff. That does not go to planning and construction.
No, but, I mean, that's, we've been talking about that in Mashpee for a while.
It's two thousand...
And we know, we voted on it last town meeting in terms of approvals and designations of funds, and, yeah, I mean, that's...
But you missed my point. Planning and construction has nothing to do with that. CIP has to do with that.
No, but, I mean, I'm just saying, they're all town residents. We all live in this town. They all know what's going on. It just seems, you know, I feel like it's a fair point, but it's up to somebody other than us to determine how best to scale this alongside the southern major expenditure in town. I'm glad I don't have to figure that out, and to Don's point, I would definitely voice my support for transitioning to artificial turf, you know, and if that means repairing them this year and then putting something on the warrant for next year that scales up over a period of four years, then that's what, I'll support if that's what they say we have to do.
So supporting whatever DPW... So, I'm here. We advocate, we want to transition to synthetic fields. We know the benefit of it. The decision of how to go, how much money to spend now is not, in our purview, it needs to be, it needs to belong to DPW and CIP.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I would say any money that they're spending now is just a band-aid that will be wasted at some point down the road.
Yeah, agreed.
So you could word something that, say something about that, yeah?
Yeah.
It doesn't represent a good investment by the town.
I mean, I think we're all sensitive, since we're taxpayers, of the impact, but, you know, my recollection was this project here from Quasnet was about $7 million paid by the town, along with the state building fund, which kicked in about three. And if I remember right, and George recalls better than I do, that was about 16 cents on the taxes.
I mean, I don't want to go down a logical argument, and, again, we need to stop this. I don't want to go down a logical argument that we don't spend any money or we spend too many dollars. I don't think that's a winning argument. I mean, there needs to be some investment into the fields at this point if we're going to delay the, but that's not our decision to make. I believe that's DPW's decision to make, yeah?
Yeah, my point was up to DPW, but I do think it's a waste to know. Yeah, all we're doing is a band, all we're doing is a band-aid, that we ultimately should be figuring out how to come to...
Long-term.
A long-term...
Do we have to do the band-aid for safety reasons?
No, that's part of my conversation at CIP was if...
Hasn't it opened yet?
Anyway, what I, what was your question?
Was, is there any safety issue with not doing any new upper fields?
No, we just wouldn't use them. So part of, that's where I was wrong, because part of my conversation at CIP was if I knew of a sort of commitment, we're going to market it for a year, we're going to communicate, and if they would support it any year, I would say do nothing this year, because that's pointless to me. We can make do for, we'll make do for another year, but if that's not the way it's going to go, then, yeah, we want to do something to the field.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much for letting me throw back your hand in the meeting. I have to thank Patty for that this morning. So, you know, it is what it is, and sometimes we have to make these hard discussions, and to be honest with you, I thought it was a movement in the right direction that, you know, other members of the town are reaching out for a recommendation out of our purview because we're affected by it, and I think, and so I kind of look at that as a flat, flat , half-full, nothing. So I heard you, we can spend a message via Patty, and I'll make sure you guys all see it, as we decide to put together, and I heard all the comments, and we need to make it, advocate for it, understand that it's not our decision to make.
Are we going to see it before it does or after?
I don't see any reason why you wouldn't see it before it does.
It would be my preference.
Is collaborative on the subcommittee? Is that somewhere else?
No, it's on the subcommittee.
Okay, the, is that the collaborative meeting, the last meeting, and the usual stuff? But the one thing that kept pressing was that the dinner, the breakfast, legislative breakfast is coming out, and apparently, I'm going, but I don't really know here, but apparently at one point in time, it was only the education folks that had this breakfast, and now there are all sorts of other groups getting involved in it, so the Realtors are apparently before us. So the suggestion was made, if we get a hold of our legislatures and say how important it is for them to be on time for the legislative breakfast.
The Realtors are going first?
But there's apparently having a, apparently now all sorts of different groups are having these legislative breakfasts instead of us being these...
So they're going to the Realtors first?
They're going someplace first.
The Realtors aren't coming first.
Oh, I see.
I get you.
So they're going, that's first off. I'm not sure if Realtors, that, that was just thrown out, but they're definitely going to something before they come to us, so the important thing is to get them to show up on time. So if you want to call us, we'd like them...
Yeah, I'm not going to reach out to Julian and David and say, make sure you're on time. I'm going to assume that they are going to be on time. Okay. And since you mentioned the legislative breakfast, you guys should have all gotten a notification today that the Division VII mask officers are going to be there early, so if you want to come and just weigh in on where we have a summer meeting and what you'd like, what topics you want to see covered, we'll be in the meeting space for the collaborative board behind the building there between nine and 10. And then, I saw that you're attending the legislative breakfast, and you are, Chris, are you not?
No.
You are?
You are.
Okay, that's great. Nice Mashpee.
Yeah, awesome.
And the other thing that's super cool is that Rodney's committed to come, and I think I said this to Patty, but I feel like it's a real reflection of the progress that we've made and our relationship with the town, and Patty's regular meetings with Rodney, and sort of the more transparency and communication that we've been doing. And I remember when I first joined this board, I went to a mask conference, and there was a town manager presenting with the superintendent, and I just thought, oh, that's so cool, I wish our town manager was here, because we're on Cape Cod, and we're in Hyannis, and we're like 15 minutes away, and sure enough, Rodney did present with us in November, and was a part of our panel, and now is showing up at the legislative breakfast. At least, we hope, you know, nothing comes up and he can be there, but I just think that's, it's just a, I think it's great, shows some progress, so I'm proud of us.
Any other subcommittee comments? Awesome. Is there anything time-sensitive about the working group, kind of like any survey that we need to discuss and come to table at? Can I get a motion to table?
Second.
Motion by George, second by Nicole, for the working group updates until the next scheduled regular meeting. Next item on the agenda is specifically assigned unfinished business, the naming of the Mashpee Middle High School Christopher A. Perkins Fitness Center. We had that discussion last week, and we had the letter from Principal Valistrachi.
I'd like to make a motion to name the Mashpee Middle High School Fitness Center to the Christopher A. Perkins Fitness Center.
Motion by Chris and a second by Don to name the current Mashpee Middle High School Fitness Center to the Christopher A. Perkins Fitness Center. Any discussion? Are you none? Don, ready to vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, passage unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the proposed use of school choice funds update. Patty, I forgot why we even had that in there.
I think it has to do with the AP test.
Well, that's next.
So, yeah, it's just, I don't know why it has to stop, except it was related to that.
Is there any quick update or anything you need to put out?
No, it has not changed from the last page.
Okay, excellent. Next item on the agenda is the new business, so this is a discussion of reimbursement of AP exam fees. I'll turn it over to Superintendent.
So you have a paper in the packet, and we're proposing to do this for FY '20, and so you see the breakdown of students who have to pay the full rate to take the test, those who are free and reduced, the number of exams we have ordered, because you have to order in the fall, and then what the cost is, so you'll see that it's $18,153 for the current group of AP students to take the exams, those who are restricted to take them. And then Mr. Funk, I believe he's going to talk about possible funding source, and they're looking at the operating budget.
All right, so we ordered almost 60 tests, what, over here?
Four, eight?
Because they're taking multiple tests? I got, I'm all this. Okay, cool, got it.
All right. That's okay. You can either turn to page 43 and follow along with me. On page 43, you have the budget to actual. You'll notice that they, I always have this line in instructional services, other, which is for incentives and so forth, and if you'll notice that I have a little code over there where it says C66738. That means it's $66,738 of that line item that is going to come out of choice, that's what the C that we're proposing.
What page is it?
It's 43.
43. 43.
Okay, so you're looking at the very last...
District-wide instructional?
Yes.
Yes, very last.
Yeah, very last line.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry.
Okay. You all set?
Yep.
Okay. So the actual budget was for $61,762. The actual amount that we needed, that was for the new ELA, we needed an additional $66,738. So you've got appropriation, and you've got money that's going to be backed out, which is the choice money, $66,738. If you look, and it's in a negative right now, you can either look at it that way, or you can look at it as if it was total on that line item, $128,500, and we have expended $111,845, and if you subtract that, those two, we're going to come out with $16,654. So that would be $16,654 for the test. If you look up above, outside tutors, I would transfer that line, giving you $18,654. That's coming out of appropriation. So then it needs to come off of page 65, actually, again, out of the appropriation.
Right, it would settle, that's the chart. Right, so below it would not be listed yet.
Okay, that tells we're FY '21, right? FY '21. We can take it off of this. Okay. I believe it's listed as above.
Paul, if I'm not mistaken, all these tests are already paid for by the parents and students, but...
That would be refunded to the parent.
Yes, so that money, has that money then been already forwarded to wherever you pay for the test?
No, Mr. Funk was talking, he said the student activity account, an AP account that will then, Mr. Funk would then, out of the appropriation, pay the college board, and then we would refund out of the student activity a check to the parents.
So you refund the exact money out from the exact account that was funded in the first place?
Yes.
Because that's how they base the test.
I just wanted to make sure that's how it's working.
For the first time, I don't get your math, but I want you to re-explain it.
Sure, very simple. If you look up the bottom line, there's $66,738, okay? That's coming out of choice. So I had to decrease that line item by $66,738.
Oh, I got it.
You take the $61,738...
Yeah, you take the $16,000, okay, understood. Boom.
So what's the vote?
I don't want to say that.
Yeah, but...
So duly moved to that one. Is it actually something...
Technically, no, because the budget's already appropriated.
Right, it's already voted. And I'm just...
So thank you for that information. Does, I mean, honestly, does anybody have any concerns with the way that the business management moves forward, so they can just get out of this?
No.
Excellent, thanks, Mr. Funk. So now that we discussed the subcommittee, we do not have any items, the chair did not reasonably know in advance, unless there's any other information that I did not reasonably know in advance.
I just want to amend that former statement, when I said that I was proud of us, I meant Mashpee, not just the people.
Oh, I took that as a collective opinion.
Yeah, I meant the community, I meant how we've come together, and just really proud of us collectively.
Any public comment?
No, no.
I have just one question. Are we ever going to have a tribe come back and be...
They, they always just...
Did we have, did you have that leadership meeting, was my, coming up?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven. And I know that Roxanne came in.
Okay, so maybe we could, maybe you could field him out. I know we've talked about this, but I don't, it seems strange to just talk to the tribe in one meeting, we're at the tribe, and that's kind of like how it's shaping up to be.
We can only ask.
Well, if I need to do, if I need to go talk to somebody, I'm happy to do that, advocate for it, whatever, I just need to know that I have to do that.
So, like, so before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'm just going to let everybody know that our next special meeting will be on February 5th at 5:30. Location's going to be, do that in your office, in Superintendent's office, for setting goals, and then I believe our next meeting after that is the...
Exactly, it still runs, we have February 14th.
26, February 26, our next scheduled regular meeting. Anything else before we ask for a motion? So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Okay. Motion by George, second by Chris. Any discussion? No, didn't hear any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.